Good evening, welcome to the early work session of Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 25th, and the meeting is called Order at 7:04 PM. Let the record show all council members are present.
Six oh four.
Item number six oh four, is that what it says? Yeah, six oh four, sorry. Thank you, John. I'm on Eastern Time for some reason. Receive an update and presentation from Upper Trinity Regional Water District regarding their projects, operations, and services. Mr. Larry Patterson and Mr. Richard Lupke will present. Which one's up first?
We start with a couple of things.
Okay, so I gotta warn you. You gotta hit this out of the park because I know your reappointment's coming.
It's only been, what, 27 years?
Something like that.
I wanted to, before I turned over to Larry, I wanted to do a couple of things. One, we just did our audit, and a couple of little things. Do you remember a few years ago Flower Mountain said we'd be out of business by now? And tried to turn everybody against us? First of all, we had equity of $233,000. $233 million dollars from this latest audit. We were up 5%. And we've had 15 consecutive years where we've raised that equity number. So I think we're gonna be around a little while.
Maybe.
Also, on Flower Mountain, you notice you haven't heard anything bad about us and everything from them. Clay Riggs, and I don't know if you know Clay, he's gonna be our new next president. He's the head of utilities for Flower Mountain and doing a great job of getting all that stuff out of the way, so it's no longer a problem. And also, I have not forgotten about taking everybody out to the new lake and letting you see it. Every time we planned it, we've had, you know, weather like you don't want to be out there in a rainstorm. So, but I'm still trying to put it together, and we will go out there. Okay? Now I'm gonna turn it over to Larry. He knows a little bit about the Upper Trinity, and I thought maybe it'd be a good idea if he gave it. Your honor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm a resident of Highland Village. I've lived here since 1978, so.
So you were on the softball field.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's true. Well, Upper Trinity, we're moving forward with a lot of projects. I've tailored the briefing tonight to be specific to Highland Village. Our Lakeview Water Reclamation Plant currently is at 5.55 million gallons per day capacity, permitted to 7.5 as noted. You see those that are served. Highland Village subscription currently is 1.65 million gallons. You probably average close to about 1.2. And Rich has a handout there that relates to Ralph Hall for your reference. A few things I'd like to point out about the Lakeview Plant. This plant was really made possible by acquiring the plant from Lake City Municipal Utility District in the Lake Dallas, and this was where the Highland Village wastewater was diverted from up to this site many years ago, 24 years ago. You see 24 years platinum. What that means is if a plant receives 100% compliance for one year, you get a gold award. And if you continue that for five years straight, you get a platinum award. So this plant's been in operation for 24 years, and it's received platinum for 24. This is one of less than a dozen in the United States that's received this award. So we're proud of that. But we also, we have four water reclamation plants, and all four are platinum. We're the only district or river authority in the state of Texas that has all of our plants with perfect compliance for a minimum of six years. Most of them are 13 or 14 years. So we're happy about that. We have that, this project site under design for an expansion, but where it's delayed primarily because of the need. There's state regulations that require us to expand once we hit 90% of capacity. We're operating about 82% now. State law requires us to begin planning and design after 75. So we're into compliance, but we're hoping that we can push this thing out for years. There's been, I think, one rate increase in the last six years related to this project site, this part of our system. So your wastewater's taken care of. This is the service area as it exists today for the Upper Trinity Regional Water District. I'd like to point out the main new addition is the Grayson County. The Mustang Special Utility District has consolidated with the Mary Lee's SUD out of Grayson County, Gunter area. And so our bylaws and enabling legislation, we expand with our members as you annex or whatever. So this shows the reflection that ultimately we would be serving some parts of Wise County, Cook County, Grayson County. Our permits going forward for our water supply has already acknowledged that in the documents we filed years ago. So we are serving 29 communities now through this system. We have two water treatment plants. We have the Thomas C. Taylor Plant right below the dam at Lewisville, and then up north of there, we have the Harpoel Plant along 380 in Providence Village. We're serving over 400,000 people now, and we're growing at a very significant rate. This service area in the next 50 years will be over 2 million people, according to the latest state demographer projections. So this is what the Taylor Treatment Plant looks like. Highland Village subscribes to 3 million gallons per day. That's a demand rate, so we provide that amount at a peak time. You also have your well system that probably provides close to three and a half. Your load rate or load factor is among the highest in the district in that you utilize your alternate supplies when necessary during the summer. But we do encourage water conservation to maximum extent possible, and we are maintaining in stage one restrictions. We're two times a week watering, don't water during the middle of the day, but use water only when it's necessary. We see that even though the lake is near full at this point, can drop rapidly as we've seen. So this plant is 70 million gallon capacity. We're currently under design for expansion to make it 85. Last month, the Water Development Board approved a loan, or actually approved for us to file an application for a loan. They had a competition, and we were ranked the highest project in the state for this new program. And so we'll receive a special loan that will be processed through the summer, with the proceeds delivered probably in November. And this will expand it 15 million gallons. Probably take us two years plus to get it completed, and it'll probably cost three times what it took to build this plant at the way things are going. So water supply planning. We have three primary sources of water at this point. Lake Lewisville, Ray Roberts also waters, delivers from Ray Roberts as necessary to Lewisville. Lake Chapman water, we have a contract with the City of Commerce where we purchased their water for 100 years with an option for 50. We're about 25 years into that deal. We bring the water through a pipeline that's jointly.
You and I are gonna be there.
Yeah.
And that 100 years could be the person.
Yeah, I'm working on it. The pipeline from Chapman is jointly owned by North Texas and the City of Irving up to this point. Then Irving brings it on in. We have agreements for the use of the pipeline. Back in 2003, when this last section was placed in service, we asked Irving to go through a proposal to build a larger pipe than needed, which they did because we knew we'd need more water in the future, which we have discovered that. So we're currently constructing Lake Ralph Hall, and we're gonna be starting construction of the pipeline 32 miles to tie into this pipeline later this summer. We recently executed a new agreement with the City of Dallas for 30 years with the option for renewal again. The Chapman contract, as I mentioned, is ongoing for many years. And the City of Denton, we're currently negotiating a renewal on our temporary contract there. We typically buy up to 5 million gallons of water a day from Denton, from their surplus. Ralph Hall is fully permitted and under construction. So let's talk about Ralph Hall real quickly. Ralph Hall is about the size of Grapevine Lake, so let's say 7,800 acres as for surface area. Our project boundaries around the lake total close to 16,000 acres. This includes a mitigation zone that we are starting construction of later this, well, before summer, sometime in late May or June. We shouldn't initiate, and what we're doing is restoring the old river channels and amending the area to meet the requirements placed upon us by the Corps of Engineers and environmental agencies. We also have a fossil park that's a unique site up there that we'll be building so people can access the old river channel and the Sulfur River in the hunt for fossils. Last summer, we found several mosaures that we're actually, we worked with the Perot Center to recover, and we've created a demonstration exhibit in Commerce at Children's Museum. We're about 40,000 people, or children come to that each year. So a lot of side issues. This reservoir is gonna be different than any that you've ever seen in that we will have an administrative visitor center here that will provide opportunities for the local community to use. We have watershed protection zones where we have areas. These areas are adjacent to the cattle grasslands, so there's gonna be about 4,000 acres of land here that will not be developed, that will be, provide protection for water quality, but actually allow for recreational uses. We have a bridge that we're, we're just near construction completion, and we will have a dedication with text out in June. And this bridge also has a pedestrian way, so you'll be able to walk or run or ride your bike across the lake on the bridge, and it'll tie into a trail system. So a lot of different kind of soft amenities in Highland Village is great for trails, so a lot of amenities will be similar to what you have, where you have railhead or trailheads and this type of thing. So a lot of work there is underway. So the balancing reservoir is located here. This is a place where the pressurized pipe, the water that's pressurized in our pipe goes to large basins that are set up with, it could hold ultimately as much as 100 million gallons. And those would then go through a gravity system and be injected into the pipeline and pumped west. The pump station we're utilizing is the Irving Pump Station under agreements we have. Where we're going back into the existing pump station that was placed in service in 2003, and we're changing out some of the pumps and expanding it so we don't have to build a completely new pump station, which at this time will probably cost over $150 million. We think we can probably move forward with our pumps for about 25 million. So all along the way, although things are costing more and the delivery chain is a real challenge in a lot of ways, we've done everything we can to minimize and to utilize everything we can to maximum extent possible and minimize the disruption to the locals. I mean, we had to purchase over 402 tracts of land at the lake site and 138 tracts along this 32-mile pipeline. We've done that without condemning more than two dozen individuals. We're in a downhill slide on that. We probably have less than five, six parcels, I think it is, up at the lake, and about 10 that we're in the process of condemning along the pipeline route. So we're moving forward, and we've treated people fairly and allowed them to stay on their property as necessary. We're clearing the sites now and putting up fences, but we have also leased land back to the individuals to get a revenue stream so we can have cattle there or whatever until we need it. So it's, all in all, we're becoming good neighbors, and that's why we want to represent our members and as a responsible agency. But lots have been going on, and I've got a little briefing that kind of summarizes what happened through 2022, and that we've made progress since. But if I can just show you a little short video, and this will give you a good idea of some of the work being done there. We have a pretty positive presence on social, social media, website. You can sign up. You can also receive the project updates, special updates issued each month. The share locker program you see at the tail end there, we're working with the parks and or the fishing wildlife folks in the state to stock fish. We've begun that program where they take these bass, large bass. If it's over 13 pounds, it can be donated to the state. The state takes it to Fish Hatchery in Athens, and they basically encourage the growth of these fish, and then they bring them out to the site. So we've targeted several ponds that are in the lake already, and they've cleared them of the other bass or predators that would be there and started stocking fish. We're working with the state regarding, and the game wardens regarding to our plans, how many boat ramps we'll have and all this. We're going through a good program to make it a really top-notch fishing lake, and it'll be the first, along with the Boadark, Lake Boadark, northern part of Fannin County, that's been initially stocked with these large bass. And in recent program discussion we had with them, they think within five to 10 years, the beach, record-setting bass caught it this lake as well as the other. And so we're programming a lot of facilities so we could have those type of tournaments and things like that. And I think it'll all be just another good feature for the lake and the use of the site. So.
For a hundred bucks, I'll give you a map.
It could be that knowing the state, they're gonna put it on the website someplace, and you'll find it. But a lot of work's going on. We've got, we have already purchased the 32 miles of pipe and the valves. We did an early purchase. We monitored steel prices. Once they did a little dip, we jumped on it. And so the pipe's being manufactured in Parrish, Texas, and be delivered to us instead of having trucked in from Alabama or wherever. We just have taken bids on 22 creek crossings and highway crossings where we do tunnels that are required. So there's about 350 individuals working at the project site now, Lake Ralph Hall. And just today, I had a meeting with our dam, the contractor for the dam, not the dam contractor, but anyway, he is debatable. But anyway, they're talking about bringing a, now that we're going into the summer, they're bringing a night crew in to prepare the excavate materials so they can place it properly during the day, but it just kind of catches up with another crew. And as I mentioned, the bridges and roadways are completed. We've removed all the power lines and AT&amp;T and this type of thing, water line relocations. We put in about 50 miles of fencing, and we're clearing the trees now in some areas. And so it's beginning to shape up significantly, but I would welcome any of you that are able to make a visit to the site. You gotta get up there to see it, to believe it. And it's, I've, this was the first lake permitted in the state of Texas since 1985. I've personally been involved in this project for 21 years. I'm hoping to get it finished before I retire, and I think we will. Our target has shown, we're looking to deliver water to this community and our service area by '26. So we're on schedule. Some of the works are ahead of schedule, but a lot more to do. And we got a real dedicated team that's involved in this. Uniqueness of this project group is that the engineer that started this project with me is still on board. He changed companies, and I said, they asked me what that means. I said, "We just hired another company." And then he retired from those folks, and he's our program manager now. So any questions about Upper Trinity or about Lake Ralph Hall project, be glad to answer.
He said you can start delivering in two years. Are you filling now at all?
No.
I mean, when do you start filling?
Well, '26, actually.
You'll start filling?
No, that's when we expect to deliver. The unique nature of the design is that the lake does not be totally full before we could start exporting water or delivering the water, withdrawing it. It can probably be about 25% full, and we can take some minimum amount of water to test our system. We, we're at the current program date, by the late, mid to late '25, we would probably close the dam and start impounding water as we continue to work on the dam and bring it up. And so all the facilities are timed as such, probably by, definitely by this time next year, we will have all the elements of the project under construction, and we'll have, we'll know our true cost and this type of thing. Right now, we're very fortunate in that we secured significant loans from the state at low interest rates, like 2.3 interest rate. And it's under a special program that allows us to defer payments for, it takes up 13 years before we pay full principal and interest. So it's actually about a 34-year note. And what it does, it's not compounded, it's simple. So the state's carrying the loan along as a part of the state water program to build infrastructure, they're so costly. So we're pushing the cost to those that are really use this lake versus immediate customers. We've also set up some contingencies for rate buffering from our, going forward too. Where we have a good year, we have some excess revenues, or maybe we don't break everything, you know, and that type of thing, we'll put in the reserves. We have significant reserves to help us through that too. So we're trying to make this as a streamline and as smooth as we can going forward. Our average rate changes over the last 10 years have been right at 3%. And last year was a little more, it was like 4.6, and the year before 1.45. But we're seeing a lot of cost and changes, and it's just like everybody else trying to get things. It's really interesting nowadays. So we're doing what we can to go forward with that, but we're looking forward to this project being completed, but we have so much infrastructure needed too, especially as you can see the counties we're serving. It's gonna be a challenge going forward, but I think we're up to the challenge. We've got a lot of really good people working for us, and we have a lot of great support from our member cities and customers.
Should cut you short.
Thank you.
Wait, I have one, I have a question for you. So like the lake around here, obviously Lake Lewisville is a Corps of Engineers lake, and they administer it, they have some parks, I believe, are on their jurisdiction, they have their own police department. Is Upper Trinity going to be doing all the administration, all of the management of the lake from this point forward, once it's, I mean?
Yes.
It's your lake, right?
Yes, sir. It'll be unique in that this is, and we can share offline more details. It's a very unique concept in that we purchased, we own the entire shoreline. Nobody touches it without us approval. We have purchased land 100 feet back or nine feet elevation up, and so in some cases, it's more than 100 feet. So we own the shoreline, that allows us to permit docks and things like that, and they'll pay a fee for that access, and we'll control it, make it the highest quality possible. We have contracts with the county for the Sheriff's Department, and we're working on similar agreements with the state for the game wardens to do protection and policing. We'll have on-site, we already have people there that are permanent, and we have some facilities and homes we purchased that we're converting for our use, offices and things. So it'll be different than the Coral Lake. There'll be people accessing it somewhat similar to Highland Village, but not as close. And then there'll be common facilities. We're working now with, we'll have a marina, but it'll be one of these type of operations where people will, a third party will operate it, and it will receive a commission for their use of our facility.
I only ask for one thing for the lake, is the beer concession. They won't give it to me.
Yeah, well, I thought they were gonna name the Beer Pavilion after me, sir, so I forgot that. Yeah. Well, thank y'all for your support over the years and.
What kind of recreational activities will be supported? You mentioned the size of Grapevine, so I envision.
Well, it's some of what is still under development, but we have a trail system. There's, we have fossil hunting, we have, there'll be some, of course, we have three boat ramps, there'll be a marina, there will be the fossil, like I mentioned, the fossil park, but the other activities, there could be a trail system and connecting it to the city. The city is very close to the lake, probably as a crow flies, it could be like less than two miles. And so there's a lot of things, development between the two that might allow it to be, offer up more opportunities for development and everything. But the fishing is the big deal, bird watching, hiking, camping. We're working on some areas where we could have camping and/or basically cabins and things like that and visitor center. There's places that we could actually have a, you know, hotel, restaurant type of venue overlooking the water near the dam that is reserved, and it fits in nicely with our needs, with operational needs as well as, you know, providing amenity. The road network's been improved significantly by text coming into the site. And then where we provided reroutes and the bridge, it's gonna be able to allow to bring people in from any direction easily. You can leave this building right now, and you'll be there in an hour and 15 minutes. That's another major activity too, so close than the metroplex.
Thank you.
Quick question. In terms of cost structure, would the cost for the development and production of this be absorbed in the current rate structure? Or you anticipate a rate increase to cover the cost?
Yes, sir. We expect the rate increases as the debt falls in line. As I mentioned, we have a programmed rate with loans through the Water Development Board, and they have systematic dates where they increase through time. Like, for example, we borrowed $450 million, let's say. Like, for example, we borrowed $450 million, let's say. Well, we didn't take it all at once, we took $100 million and then $120 million and then, so our, the clock doesn't start, so the deferral will allow us to grow customers and revenue stream to pay for that so that the rate increases are somewhat mitigated. And we, each year, we look at this, one of the few utilities that I'm aware of that provide this type of information, we always give a five-year look ahead. So you're, Mr. Lubke will have a, have a, formally presented at our Board of Directors meeting, a five-year rate projection for each, for our regional treated water system. So we can tell you what we think it will be, in this September, we'll give a guess basically of, based on several assumptions that we'll present in the document going forward for five years. So you'll always have a five-year look ahead from Opportunity.
And that information's coming to us in September, is what I heard you say?
Yes, sir. So you'll have an idea of where the current rate would be changed and our projections. And typically, we've been right on that target or less for the last five years that I'm aware of. I've been the executive director since '18.
When was the last rate increase?
Last year.
Last year?
Yes, sir. Was about 4.6%. The year before that was like 1.4 or 5%. And then, like I say, over the last 10 years, it's averaged right at 3%, slightly less than 3%. Now, during this period, see, we've added some of our increases, like our raw water costs from Dallas has gone up 40%. I mean, it used to be 40 cents, now it's over a dollar nickel. So and it's going up every year. One year it went up 40 cents in one year. So once we, you know, have this program, ultimately, when you pay the debt off, now we're talking 2050s, then you get into the O and M operation. It's just like when you buy a home, you've got to pay the mortgage, but once that's done, you're just paying maintenance and upkeep. So the cost will be buffered out. And we always go for the lowest use or source water we have and that's typically our reuse. We'll be filing for permits to get the right to reuse the water. So if we bring in 30 million gallons of water from Lake Ruff Hall and we account for it and send it to our system, it comes back to our wastewater treatment plants that are discharged back into the lake, then we claim that water the second day, although we're taking it out of Lewisville, so essentially it's free. And so if we bring in 30 million, the next day you can bring 30 million in, pull 45 million out. So that's our program, that's currently what we do, it guards the Chapman water and it's pretty efficient. So overall, our cost are continued to increase, but primarily due to the fact that we have to purchase the water from others. We don't have our own water, what a right that is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gents. Item number two, discuss nomination of candidate for election to the Board of Managers of Dinco Area 911 District. This is Miller.
25 minutes.
25 minutes. So it is that time of year to discuss the Dinco Area 911 District Board of Managers. We do have two members that are appointed jointly by all of the members participating within Dinco's district. So each year on September 30th, that term expires for one of the two members appointed and prior to that date, council has an opportunity to submit nominations for candidates to represent the municipalities. So we have been contacted by Dinco. The current representative serving Sue Tamel, her term expires this year. So this is an opportunity for council to discuss and decide if they wish to nominate. It's not a requirement, however, in the eight years I've been here, you've always nominated. So like I said, this is an opportunity for discussion purposes and then there is an action item tonight if you wish to nominate someone.
Any questions?
I'm free next year.
Anybody want to nominate Mike?
No.
Who did we nominate last year?
Sue Tamel.
Well, so Sue Tamel and Jim Carter have been the two that have served, yeah. So current board members, Bill Lawrence is a representative for Denton County Commissioners' Court, Sue Tamel, obviously, Jim Carter, our chief co-ear is, serves as for the Denton County Fire Chiefs. Jason Cole serves for Denton County Commissioners' Court and George Karatsi serves to represent Verizon. So that's the, those are the current board members that we have serving. I do know that Dinco offers a lot of services, training opportunities for our dispatch personnel. They do allow us, like when we had the storm or the electrical issue a while back and we didn't have power here at City Hall, they were able to help us out with some of that, with dispatch services and things. I know we're also looking to them to help allow for an offsite storage for some of our backup systems.
I guess, so I guess we have the choice, we can nominate, we can nominate on the action item tonight or if we decide not to do anything tonight, that item can be, I guess, removed?
If you chose not to take any action, we would just table that or just not take any action? Yeah.
All right.
Right. We do have a little bit of time there, we have to nominate by May 31st, so there is a little bit of time to do that.
So Tom and Mike, if you want to, you know, take that last opportunity.
Okay.
Mayor Sees all right with me.
So, okay, so just, I mean, I'm kind of at a loss.
This is just for discussion for you, to have that opportunity to discuss, see if Sue is who you would want to reappoint or if there's someone else that you have in mind. It is on the agenda for tonight for action. If you chose to reappoint Sue, you could do that this evening or choose not to.
Okay, so, so yeah, when we get to that, if somebody wants to go ahead and nominate her, that would be the appropriate time to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
So as you asked though, nobody has anyone else to nominate, so we don't have anybody, but for discussion purposes. What are we getting out of Sue? She's perfectly happy where she's at, she wants to be nominated again.
Yes.
She's been effective for us.
She has served since 2013 on the board. I think you guys were provided with her resume. Jason, he's on the board, however, he's a new member to the board, so I'm not sure his experiences, if he's had any opportunity to sit in on very many meetings, but he maybe can provide a little bit more insight.
I just wanted to get a little bit of information about who the person is and how they're corresponding with him.
Well, I'm not going to be a lot of help on the board side because I've been to one meeting before I got on and then I broke my foot, so I missed the meeting, the next, my appointing meeting. So as far as what the board, the board oversee, you know, they're by statute, they're an independent board that your 911 fees on your cell phone and landline go to them. We're kind of a unique, I shouldn't say that, there's several districts, but like Dallas has, some of the cities get the fees directly and then they have a northern, I'm new to some of this area that has some of Dallas County. So Denton County is all one. So there are, all our fees from the phone lines go to one entity and then that entity provides all the 911 computers, everything else that, all the PIS apps, and that's, so when you dial 911, it goes into it and there's, I'd have to count off, there's several PIS apps in Denton County. And they fund all that, they take care of all the 911 and we are, through some of my county stuff, we get a report from the director at our fire chiefs meeting, but Denton County probably is the most state-of-the-art 911 facility in the United States. We're way ahead of a lot of other people, we were the first people to be able to receive 911 by text in the United States. So the facility and what they do with their money is phenomenal. As Angie said, they've got a hardened facility, backup center over in Lewisville and it is open to any of the PIS apps in the county. If you have a problem, the city of Denton used them for 10 days while theirs was being, I'm sorry, Denton County used theirs for 10 days while their facility was being remodeled when we had our electrical issue. We moved over there for a week or so and that's just part of the service they provide. And then they also, they're providing a backup computer that I know we're looking at, Ken's looking at it at a pretty economical rate based on what I've said. So that's kind of what they do. They're, I've looked at one time on the financial side of it and they seem to be really sound, so they're very prepared and they've, with the Argyle Fire Department situation and the ESD that just went through that you, I don't know if y'all remember that, they've also required Sue, she's on, Jim Carter's on that board also, and they requested a forensic audit of the Dinco board and that's going on right now. Their normal audit got passed with flying colors like the one that the city did, but they've also asked for a forensic audit just to make sure that all their Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And that's coming back to us, they hadn't seen that yet. But so, that's kind of what they're, how they work. I know it's very sound based on what I've seen. That's about all I can tell you at this point because I haven't been to an official meeting yet either, so.
Well, I appreciate you giving us some information on it.
But I could, if y'all want Greg, their, I don't know what his actual title is, he's the director, if we wanted him to come in and give a presentation, I'm sure, kind of like what Opportunity did, he'd be more than willing to do it because he, and he's good at it. I mean, he's been to several of the chamber meetings and kind of gone over what they've done and everything else. So if that's something that you would be interested in, I'm sure we can work that too.
Or we could have Sue come in as well.
Or Sue.
Thank you.
If you want details, Greg would be the, if you want to see your rep, Sue is it, but if you want details of exactly what Dinco does, Greg would probably be more in tune with the day-to-day functions.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
So yeah, if you guys would like for Sue to come in at some point, we could have her come at a future meeting before we did any action.
I don't know, I just, I really just wanted to get a feel for it more than anything else. I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable that we've had not had any problems with 911 for a while, so really just wanted to get a feel.
Okay.
Why don't we move this item to consent agenda?
That's perfectly fine.
Fine with me.
You could, just when you make the motion, you'll have to put in there, if you want to nominate, the name of the person you're nominating.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Item number three, clarification of consent or action items listed on today's city council meeting. Does anybody have any questions or need clarification on anything?
I think I did.
You did?
I think I did.
All good? I'm good.
Yeah, I just had a question on item 13, the 18-inch sewer rehab. We've got 15 minutes, we can drag this down.
Takes its time to...
I tried to burn some of that 15 minutes coming up here.
Mr. Christian, is this, was this budgeted or is this something that's just kind of developed recently?
This is a, is a line failure that was not budgeted. However, we do identify for repairs in our utility CIP, so it is funded through that.
Okay. And then the write-up had identified needs as a long-term solution to prevent pipe failures. Just to be clear, this is that long-term solution to prevent pipe failures? Okay.
We have, we have, we did an emergency project which laid a new line adjacent to this one, but it dumps back into it. And then this deeper line still picks up some of the Lake, I think it's Lake Brook neighborhood to the north.
Okay. So this should solve this problem in the future?
We're pipe bursting a new pipe in.
Okay, thank you.
Angie, I think you mentioned this could potentially get moved to consent if somebody wanted to as well?
This is on consent.
Or it is on consent, yeah.
Yeah, that is, there is item number 15, of course, which is Scott's item that could be as well.
Okay, that was the other one, okay.
Yeah, I guess that was, that was a question I had, mayor, was the discussion around item 15, if there was any, but if that could not go to consent, I didn't necessarily have any.
My understanding is that could, right? Isn't that what we talked about, Paul?
Yeah, we can move 15 to consent as well.
Yeah, I mean, if no one, if, based on the reading of staff memo, everybody's okay with it and there's no need to discuss it, yes.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? If there's nothing further, we'll close out early work session at 6:47. Good evening. Welcome to the regular session of Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 25th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please join Councilmember Fiorenza in leading the prayer and the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we ask your blessings on those who are gathered here tonight and those that have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. For our first responders, that they are guided by your spirit and safely return to the care and comfort of their loved ones each day. Let us remember that we are not only leaders but servants and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by justice, and by the spirit of love. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Next thing on the agenda is mayor and council reports. Mayor and council may report on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City council may report on the following items: expressions of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report? Councilman Nelson?
Yes, I will be pulling crossing guard duty tomorrow morning and Thursday morning at McAuliffe's. So if there's openings, I would suggest to you guys, if you can, to volunteer in the morning or the afternoon.
What kind of training is involved?
I shadowed yesterday at Briar Hill, and then there's two videos to watch. Luckily, I'm not doing Briar Hill, though.
Okay.
That, that takes a special kind of crossing guard.
It does. That's good to know. Thank you. Did Councilman Kix, do you have something?
No.
Okay. A couple of things I wanted to pass on. First and foremost, I think the news is getting out. Former county judge Mary Horn passed away a couple of days, a few days ago. Judge Horn was one of the longest-serving county judges in the state during her tenure. Led our county through some tremendous growth. She was Judge Eze's predecessor, was a very close personal friend of Judge Eze and Commissioner Mitchell, as well as others on Commissioner's court. I think that there are some arrangements that are starting to filter out about funeral and interment and whatnot, but just want to say, keep her family in your hearts and prayers. Her husband Jim, they were married, I think, for 56 years. Her husband Jim was a former state representative that represented Denton County for a number of years. So he was in Austin, I think, at the time of her passing. So please keep the Horn family in your prayers. Praise, I want to give some praise out. First, the Marcus girls soccer team, if you didn't hear, they won state. They went down to Georgetown and beat a couple of really good teams to bring home a state championship. And that was after the great send-off that our police department and fire department put together for them. So I think y'all can take a lot of credit in that. But congratulations to them. I think we're going to try to have them here at a future council meeting to give them some props. And then our very own Officer Harney. Gretchen and I went to the L I S D Awards Gala Friday night, which I, we went in Chief, in Chief Rhymes' place. He couldn't go, so we went. And what a great event, first off. A lot of great awards given out to some really great teachers, administrators, staff members, lunchroom attendants, custodians, you name it, bus drivers, awards all over the place. But Officer Harney got SRO of the year, so for the entire district. He was a little nervous. I told him when I walked in the room, I said, "You're going to win." He said, "I don't think so." I said, "Dude, if we're the model, you're the prototype." And sure enough, he won. There were, there were a number of other teachers that were from Highland Village that were recognized. We'll do something, like maybe like to bring them up as well to do something at a future date. But just, it was a great night for Highland Village with all the teachers that got recognized. I wish I had the list in front of me, but I don't. And then, of course, events coming up. We have an election in just under two weeks. Early voting, I think, has been kind of brisk. I think, I don't know what the final number was today, but yesterday's actually surpassed last year's day one number, which was high. So candidates are working hard. I appreciate that. And school board election is going along with that. So if you haven't voted, please go vote. You can go vote literally anywhere in the county right now. Election Day, you have to come here to City Hall to vote in city elections. And then the same day, there's also going to be the art festival out at the shops. I know that's a big event and an opportunity to see some really great local artists. So I encourage people, come vote, then go out to the art festival. And I think that's, I think that's it. So anybody else? Last call? Nobody want to say anything about the Stars?
The Brights.
I'm not even a hockey fan. All right, so I got something to give out. So Kim Lopez, join me up front. This is yours, or the office, I suppose. Let's come over this way a little bit more. All right, this is a recognition for the city of Highland Village. It's a platinum recognition. The city of Highland Village obtained platinum-level designation by the American Heart Association Workforce Well-being Scorecard Program. This designation is provided by the American Heart Association to recognize organizations that foster a culture of health and well-being for their employees. The Workforce Well-being Scorecard measures the extent to which an organization has implemented best practices, which have been defined through a collaborative, through a collaborative, a collaboration of leaders from some of the largest companies in the United States. Organizations recognized at the platinum level must achieve an index score of between 217 and 230. The city of Highland Village achieved a score of 219. Only 9% of organizations achieve this high score. We are proud to achieve top recognition from the American Heart Association for our wellness initiatives. Our employees are the best asset, and the city will always support physical and mental well-being of our workforce and their families. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well-earned. Well-earned. Makes my heart flutter.
Thank you, yes.
Photo bombing everyone if I'm on that end.
Oh, no.
All right, next on the agenda is city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, you got anything for us?
I do, just a couple. First, I want to commend Kim for the work that she does. She runs our wellness program and tries to make us all healthier and aware of our healthiness, our wellness. So thank you for all that work that you do. Also want to mention, I believe we talked about it a little bit last week, the splash pad surfacing and the fencing is all done now. It looks fantastic, and so that's going to be a tremendous grand opening for that this season. So if you haven't gone by to look at that, please do. Brian's been overseeing that and many other projects. So that, that's been very good. Also, hope you've noticed a new paving on Highland Village Road in the curve. And of course, you probably all know there's been several accidents in that curve. And so this surfacing gives it a little bit more of a texture and a grip, so hopefully that will lessen that. We're also going to have some, some different curve signs in that, the automated ones that light up if you're going too fast. So those will be installed as well. So just wanted to mention those two projects.
When's the splash pad supposed to open? I know you've probably said, but I can't remember.
Boil Day weekend.
Okay.
Awesome.
Anything from anybody else?
All right, moving on. Quick question. When does the splash pad officially open for summer?
So the Boil Day weekend. So is it that Saturday?
Saturday. There's an echo. All right, if there's nothing else, moving on to visitor comments. Mrs. Miller, do we have anything?
Yes.
Okay, so Kevin, I don't, if we don't have anybody, I don't need to read that whole paragraph to you. All right, good. Moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval. I'm on a mission to make the record for the shortest meeting to beat Mr. Lombardo on his way out. I'm on the way.
No way. Can't be done.
All of the items on consent agenda must be considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on April 11th, 2023. Number 12, consider resolution 2023-3061, awarding and authorizing an agreement with Brightview Landscape Services, Inc. for turf and landscape maintenance services. Number 13, consider resolution 2023-3062, awarding and authorizing a contract with Douglas Daily Construction LLC for the Northeast 18-inch sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Is there any discussion needed for any of the items on the consent agenda, or does anybody wish?
I make a motion that we accept all the items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Heslop, next motion, accept all the items on consent agenda. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need to think about this for a second. No, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to action. We did not meet in closed session, so nothing for action, for number 14. Moving on to item number 15, consider resolution 2023-3063. Mr. Kristin, you better speed up, authorizing a task order with Schaumburg and Polk, Inc. to provide professional services for the wastewater lift station number two, forced main replacement, golly, wastewater lift station number seven, forced main replacement, and wastewater lifte-